On the road. And with that, if we are all ready to get started, I will officially welcome everyone to the Metro North Chambers Anoka County Commissioner Candidate Forum. Thank you all for joining us. For those who don't know, I'm Lori Higgins, President of the Metro North Chamber of Commerce that represents about 750 businesses and community leaders throughout the North Metro. We take pride in advocating on issues and working with elected officials to meet our mission of strengthening the business community and stimulating economic prosperity. County Commissioners play a very important role in the health of our region from taxes to transportation to economic development, which is why we wish to have this dialogue today. So before turning this over to your moderator, Chris Tiedemann of Weber Johnson Public Affairs, I want to thank the candidates for not just being here today, but for your interest in connecting with the business community. Our desire like yours is to have a strong, healthy region, and we appreciate your efforts to work with us in that regard. One quick housekeeping item. So for attendees, if you do have any questions or any issues throughout the course of this forum today, please send me a note via the chat. You are not visible or able to talk, given the amount of candidates that we have here today. This is being held as a webinar style, but please feel free to communicate using that chat medium. So with that, I will turn this over to Chris.
Well, thank you, Lori. I appreciate it. And thank you so much to all the candidates who were able to join us today. This is, this is exciting, and I see a ton of friends on this call. This is, this is great. And we have such a wonderful opportunity here in Anoka County to continue to have a wonderful board that appreciates the business community. And I want to have this discussion. We have, we have a lot of people who are either watching this from the chamber or will be that after we send out a link to this. So it's a, it's a really nice opportunity as we wrap up this election cycle for the voters who haven't cast their ballots to see where you all come down on some of the business issues that are so important today. Um, so the format, it will be as follows. I'm going to, there, we have five questions. I'll be asking them. We're asking the respondents, please limit it to two minutes per question. Lori is going to hold up a card, so you'll be able to see that as we get closer to the end of your time with 30 seconds left. To wrap up the current sentence, we're going to alternate back and forth between candidates in each district. And then we'll also alternate the districts, so it's not the same district starting each time. Um, and so with that said, I'm pleased and excited to introduce the candidates. We have from District One, Matt Look and John Trinault. District Two, Julie, Commissioner Julie Brastad and Noel Lutzi. District Three, Commissioner Robin West and Niall Zickman. And then Commissioner Reinhardt is here as well, and we appreciate that. So let me start with the questions. Just please abide by the time limits, be respectful of each other, and this will be a good event to inform our business community. So please, starting with District One. Provide a, yeah.
I'm so sorry. I don't think you were on yet. Commissioner Reinhardt has a hard stop at noon, so we're going to give him an opportunity to go first and elaborate a little bit as well.
Oh, sure. Okay. Sorry about that, Commissioner. Short introduction of yourself, current occupation, and why you're running for office.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for putting on this forum. I'm sorry I can't stay through the whole thing, but I'm just going to blow through as much of this as I can, hopefully not take more than a couple of minutes and then head off to my Anoka County Corrections Advisory Board meeting. All right. So first one is introduce yourself. So I'm currently in Anoka County Commissioner, running for reelection. Prior to that, as far as community, 10 years as Mayor in Lionel Lakes. Prior to that, 10 years on the City Council in Lionel Lakes, and then some citizen boards prior to that. Been married 32 years, raised three amazing daughters, and I mean that they still like me. I think that's a measure of maybe I did a good job. Business owner. I've been a business owner for over 35 years. Currently own a company called Min Farm that I co-founded. We've been around about five years. We make human recombinant proteins out of plants for medical research. Next question here, I'll just keep going. Why are you pro candidate, pro business candidate? Well, you know, I've been in business for over 35 years, and I've had several businesses that I've run, built, and sold. I understand business. I currently belong to the Rotary Club. I've been involved with the Lions. You know, our local chamber. And so I mean, it's just, it's been my life. So. Improving business development in Anoka County. Well, it depends if it's big or small. I mean, if you're going to be opening up a gas station or a grocery store or something, that's, you know, kind of local. The county doesn't get involved with any planning or zoning for local communities. But we can get involved on bigger projects that are bringing the communities together, like the North Metro Tech Corridor. Was involved with that for over three years. We started in Lionel Lakes, started bringing in Anoka County. They were a huge help because, you know, it is with multiple communities. And involved with that was Lionel Lakes, Centerville, Hugo, Forest Lake, and Columbus. That's now established, and we're, we're going after some data centers and some, you know, big deal projects. And that's something that the county can get involved with to help out. Budget priorities this year. Budget neutral, I'm thinking for 2021. We've already passed a zero levy increase for 2021. So that won't be going up. I think with $43 million worth of care is funding. We should be able to figure out how to keep a budget neutral for 2021, but we'll see. We're, we're still working on that. Transportation priorities, that's constant need in this climate because of freeze and the thaw. I mean, constantly roads breaking up and getting a little bit harder use than other parts of the country. So it'll be a constant focus for us. When I was in Washington DC with Commissioner Schulte, Look, Gamash and myself, we went around and hopped around Washington, did some lobbying for $40 million for, I think it was $120 million project. I think that's right. Matt can follow me up on that, but we did get the money. We got $40 million to be able to finish off that project and get that done. In my area, I mean, that's going to be for countywide, but in my area, Lake Drive needs a lot of work. It runs through five of my seven communities. And I'm working with Joe McPherson, our county engineer on that and putting a feasibility study together and seeing what everybody wants and what we can do and try and improve that. So I'm sure that was more than two minutes, but I kind of wanted to, you know, get a little bit of the whole Q and A involved with my answer. So again, thanks for, you know, putting this on and I'm going to bounce and go to that next meeting here and do my job as Anoka County Commissioner. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
So let's, and let's get back to the District One, and we'll start with Commissioner Look and then Mayor Letourneau. Again, with the question, the initial question. Provide a short introduction of yourself, current occupation, and why you're running for office. Commissioner Look.
Yes, Chris, thank you. It's, it's an honor and privilege to be part of this here today. Thank you to North Metro Mayors for putting this on and helping us get our message out. My name is Matt Look. I've been the Commissioner for District One for the past 10 years, and it's been an honor and a privilege to serve in that capacity. In that time, I've helped to shape the future of this district for the next 50 to 100 years. I've led the charge in keeping taxes down, reducing wasteful spending and improving roads that reduce congestion and increase public safety. Today, Anoka County is the lowest taxed county in the metro, and we are the second fastest growing county in the state. My tagline is, together we've made Anoka County better, and I believe our county is better positioned today than we were 10 years ago. I've been a small business owner for 20 years. We specialize in political printing and consulting. I often get the question, how are you so effective at getting your bills heard and worked on at the state legislature? Well, it's simple. The candidates I work for don't know it, but once they get elected, I'll be lobbying for Anoka County's needs. I have incredible relationships with these legislators, many of which don't represent the area. The reason I'm running for reelection is first and foremost, you know who I am. You know what I've done. I do not speak in platitudes. I have a plan, and I've been executing that plan for the last 10 years. I have a solid track record on votes and support outcome-based investments. I've been a champion for all things Highway 10, and there's still much work to be done on Highway 47 and coming up Highway 65. We have momentum on our side to get this done. An overwhelming majority voted for me in the past three elections because they know I had the passion and the stick-to-itiveness to accomplish what we set out to do. I humbly ask for your support again this November. My website is www.votemattlook.com for more information on the campaign. Thank you.
Commissioner, Mayor Letourneau. And you're on mute, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Again, thank you so much, Chris, for the introduction and allowing us to have an opportunity to speak in this forum. Lori, thank you very much for Metro North Chamber, for being able to pull this, pull this off and allow for an opportunity for these voices to be heard. And for us to inform residents in regards to kind of what we are and who we are and where we're going. I am a 34 years resident of the city of Ramsey in Anoka County. Came here to start a family, wanted to build a house, open a business, and basically make Anoka County my home. And like many of you, Anoka County has become our home for many years, and I take great pride in that. And I am so excited to be able to have an opportunity to serve and give back to a community that has been so generous to me. That's, that's my, my orientation. I have been a long-term entrepreneur, have owned businesses for years. We had Letourneau Super Value in the city of Ramsey for 20 years. We were the purveyor of all things grocery for this community for many, many years. And that was a wonderful way for me to get my first connections into a community that I, again, have grown to love. Upon selling the store in 2004, I've continued to expand my career. And currently I am operating Market Forward and working with an organization by the name of CO2 Partners, where we are doing executive development leadership work with the community, and it's been an amazing run. I'm interested in running for this office because I continue to get a calling that we need a leadership style that's similar to mine at the county level. I'm anxious to bring that forward and to create a more collaborative environment and allow people to work together in a way that I think is more appropriately represented in the word that I use, transparency. And so I'm excited to have this opportunity. And again, I thank you all for allowing us to have this chance to chat.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to District Two. We'll start with Commissioner Brastad, if you want to give your two minutes.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thanks to North Metro North Chamber for organizing. Brastad and Emma Lutz. I am currently serving my second term on the Anoka County Board. Prior to being elected a county commissioner, I served six years on the Ham Lake City Council and two years as a planning and zoning commissioner. I'm proud to be the current vice chair of the county board, and I currently chair the public safety, the human services, and the intergovernmental and community relations committees. Prior to being on the board, I had worked as a paralegal for many years. I decided to put my career on hold to be able to dedicate and commit my time to serving full-time in the county commissioner role. I am seeking reelection because I want to continue the aggressive work we have been doing in creating a county that offers a great place to live, work, and play. We have held the line on property taxes and even eliminated the wheelage tax. Our county roads are in excellent shape, and we actively lobby the state and partner with other government entities to improve their roads. I want to be able to continue to serve the communities that I have such deep roots in. I want to continue to be the voice of reason and be the voice of all people in my district. District Two is best served by having an approachable, well-connected, dedicated, and committed person in this office. I am seeking reelection so that I can continue my calling in public service. Thank you.
Thank you. And now go on to Noel. Noel Lutzi, can you introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Hello. First, I'd like to thank you for holding this forum and for everyone taking the time to learn more about me. My name is Noel Lutzi, and I'm honored to be a candidate for District Two. My wife and I moved to Ham Lake 20 years ago to raise a family. I'm employed in Anoka Tech and Anoka Ramsey Community Colleges, where I work closely with job creators and community stakeholders. I'm a proud volunteer at local Rotary Clubs, churches with our veterans, and our local schools. I've served as a volunteer firefighter on the Ham Lake Fire Department and helped end community hunger and homelessness. I've hosted seminars with the college and county resources to help businesses prepare to open during the COVID crisis. And I've invested in county resources to help businesses prepare with original career, online career fairs to help people find jobs when a traditional job there isn't allowed to happen. When I see a need in the community, I take action by doing whatever it takes to help solve the problem. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Noel. Now we'll move on to District Three and Commissioner West. You'll go first on this initial question. And you're on mute, Commissioner.
Remember that. Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to be here and introduce myself and my goals. I've lived in Anoka County most of the 42 years I've been married, and my husband Jay and I have raised our four sons for 30 years in this city of Blaine in the same house. Today, three of our four sons are still in Blaine rearing their families, and my grandbaby count is up to seven. I have invited many people into my home, and among my guests were exchange students from Sweden, Korea, and Japan, and missionaries that were home on furlough. I was able to go to Sweden and Japan to meet the families of two of my students. And I also visited the missionaries in India, Haiti, and England. And our Swedish student is now an American and has a successful business and a very lovely family. I have participated in and donated to many nonprofits in Anoka County. Alexander House, Hope for Youth, Stepping Stone, Lee Carlson, Mercy Hospital, and The Dwelling Place are some. I have been a lifelong volunteer. I have always participated in my children's schools and sporting events. For church and benefits that the community needs, I've always stepped up to the plate. I am a member of the Metro North Chamber of Commerce and a leading fundraiser and member of TPC Rose's Women's Charity, which has raised over $700,000 for some of those, many of those nonprofits. I am on the Board of Directors of Anoka County Committee Action and currently serving as Commissioner for District Three. I consider it a great honor and privilege to serve the residents and that they have entrusted me to represent them on the board. And I am running again to continue working with the efficiency and innovation while helping people get out of, dig themselves out of this crazy year we've had.
Thank you very much. And Niall, you're next.
Good morning, everyone. I'll echo all the same similar sentiments to the chamber for putting this forum on, so all of your members can get to see and meet us. So I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Blaine. I hold a bachelor's degree in secondary education and another bachelor's in fire science administration along with a master's in public administration. I'm a current and former small business owner, the former fire chief of the Spring Lake Park Blaine Moundsview Fire Department, which is a nonprofit corporation. And have been active and engaged in, for nearly 40 years, in numerous community service organizations such as Rotary Scouts and Church. Been married 38 years. We have one son and two biological grandchildren. We've hosted seven international exchange students from around the world, and have the be fortunate to visit six of them, and they have five exchange student grandchildren. My current occupation, I'm the city administrator for the city of Moundsview. And I'm running to build a stronger community by leveraging my business acumen, substantive legislative success, and collaboration skills to improve the business climate and family life for the residents of Blaine and Spring Lake Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our, our second question, and I'll read this first time, and then we'll start with District Two. Why do you think you are a pro-business candidate? List any affiliations with any Chamber of Commerce or business associations, as well as experiences you have owning or managing a business? And we'll start with District Two, and we'll swap. Noel, you'll start with this question.
Thank you. My father owned his own business while I was growing up, and I helped in his store. I own my own business, which included three video and gaming stores. I've also had an online presence for business sales starting in the eighties. Over the last decade, my job has been to work with local businesses to provide them and their employees with training needed to keep them competitive in the job market. This also includes working with the Minnesota Job Skills Partnership with Deeds on grants for local businesses. During the COVID crisis, I've reached out to the county and chambers to host free back-to-business seminars through our college. We've had experts from OSHA, successful reopening business plan creators, business leaders, and more on the many topics needed to get back up and running during this crisis. I will continue to do this and continue to promote the grant opportunities that are available. I have and continue to attend chamber meetings and events in the county. I am the pro-business candidate because I've been actively communicating with the chamber with regards to how to support it, since it doesn't qualify for the COVID relief fund. I am thinking about the future for our business community. Thank you.
And Commissioner Brastad, you're next.
Honestly, all you have to do is take a look at my actions on the county board as they speak for themselves. By keeping a lid on taxes, eliminating taxes, combating government overreach, and improving our transportation infrastructure, we have shown that we are committed to the business community. I believe that our business community is truly the backbone of our county. And that is why I am a member of both the Ham Lake Area Chamber of Commerce and the East Bethel Chamber of Commerce. Prior to my time as a commissioner, I served on the Ham Lake Chambers Executive Board. I do like to attend and participate in as many of the Metro North Chamber events as possible. We have faced the coronavirus pandemic head-on, and to help out businesses, we put $10 million of our CARES funds aside to go directly to Anoka County businesses in the form of $10,000 grants. We also implemented a process whereby we forgave any penalties and interest on late property taxes for those who were affected by the governor's shutdown and the restriction, restrictions that were put in place. As a county board, we passed a resolution that encouraged that businesses be allowed to reopen with precautions in place. I believe that government units need to trust our businesses to do the right thing with safety measures in place. My husband is the second generation owner of a family electrical contracting business, which I help out a lot in. We know firsthand how overtaxation, government regulation, and restrictions can impact a business.
Thank you. We'll move on to District Three, and Niall, we'll start with you on this one. And you're on, you're muted.
Yep, I was just getting muted. So I, I've been in business for over 40 years, as I mentioned. I was a ground floor employee at S&amp;W Enterprise that grew to 35 employees and 4 million. I've been the founder and principal of four other businesses since then, and again, the fire department, 125 employ, $3 million operating budget, and that was essentially a business. Member of Twin City, North Chamber, and been in Rotary for 26 years. So when I look at those businesses that I started in 84, 92, 2007, and all of the other businesses that I've helped, as well as mentoring existing owners, helped them grow. And then I have more than a dozen local area businesses that endorse me and are supporting me. You know, during my 21 years as a regulator, thousands of corrective fire orders were issued by local fire marshals, and only three resulted in court citations. And that was because I worked diligently with business owners to resolve issues as compared to the more frequent approach of just issuing citations, fines, and going to court. So I'm going to bring the most experienced, common sense approach to business regulation of any candidate. And in my current position in Moundsview, after more than a decade of zero to almost no business growth or construction projects, in the past three years, Moundsview has enjoyed the biggest, largest building boom in over two decades. As we've worked with those developers and asked them, what's, what's different, they've stated repeatedly, it's the pro-business climate that we've created, helping them cut through the regulation, moving the process along, and then having just a friendly business climate. And I think that's rooted as I bring all of that, you know, lifelong business experience. I understand at the core, the primary purpose of business is to make money. You don't make money, you go out of business. That subsequently has a negative or serious trickle-down effect on the employees and their families, which then trickles down to the community. So at the end of the day, businesses, and especially small businesses, are the backbone of any vibrant community and successful society, and I understand that fully. Thank you.
And Commissioner West. You are.
The Metro North Chamber members were some of the first new relationships I developed when I became a commissioner. I was interested in the chamber because I knew that it was the heartbeat of the, it was the heartbeat of the business world that makes community strong and prosperous. I realize that decisions made by the county board often affect your business's ability to thrive. For example, when you had Fest at Aquator Park, which was a fabulous event, I felt that the public health had caused you to have to go through extra measures to spend additional money. I worked with them to lighten up their process a little bit, and I think they should have trusted you to follow the rules yourself. I don't think you need to be policed all the time. Being a lifelong fiscal conservative, I knew that regularly regulatory overreach by any government gets in the way of the production of businesses. As owners of a dental business, my husband and I worked on the, we, I know that safety is important. But an example of crazy is when OSHA decided to cite us for having a scratch in the red lens of the darkroom light. Regulation is important, but overregulation is very much hurtful to our ability to make money. And as the bookkeeper of the company, I also realized the huge cost of extra fees and taxes. When the 2% mint care tax, provider tax, sick tax, whatever you want to call it, was implemented, the, they required us to embed the 2% cost in the statements that we sent our patients. They didn't want the patients to realize that the tax even existed. Well.
Okay, and we're going to move to District One. Mayor Letourneau, you're going to start on this one. And you're muted again.
Again, thank you. The question for us is, if I'm pro-business, and I would say that I fall solidly within the category of pro-business. Being a lifelong entrepreneur and a 20-year resident and business owner in the city of Ramsey, I think gives me a good, really a good solid base for that. And it's the, it's the lens that I bring with me into my public services, that acumen and ways to support a healthy community through a strong, vibrant business community. And I know that there's all of the aspects around how you see the world and how you plan the world inside an organization or a structure like the county, that, that means that business has to be interwoven everywhere, and so that's a great focus for us to have. One of the ways that I've reached out and more recently interacted with some pretty significant activity is through the Anoka Area Chamber of Commerce and their manufacturing cohort, which I want to appreciate Anoka County for allowing us to represent their business and expansion efforts by being a sponsor of that for a number of years, along with other cities that are associated with us. So that's been a great opportunity for me to interact with approximately 150 local manufacturers in a way that allows for us to work collectively to solve problems. An example of one of the things that we had done with that organization was, we had an opportunity to interact with the Anoka Hennepin Number 11 School District and actually rewrite curriculum that's more appropriately aligned for today's business community. That sets up a pathway for student learners to be able to save their jobs or create jobs and to be able to move forward in a way that allows them to live in the community that they love and grew up in. So I am a member of the Anoka Area Chamber of Commerce. I've been on their board twice, and I've been their board chair twice. Also a member of the Ramsey Rotary, been on their board and chaired that Rotary for one season as well. It's been a great run. I'm enjoying my continuing career in business, and I'm looking forward to applying that with my new role as Anoka County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Look.
Well, thank you. I think that actions speak louder than words. Essentially, you can't say that you're pro-business if your actions don't prove it. Otherwise, it's just cheap talk. Over the last 10 years, my actions have taken this county from good to great. We are the lowest taxed metro county, as mentioned, and the second fastest growing county, according to the Department of Employment and Economic Development, otherwise known as DEED. Approximately eight years ago, I encouraged this board to identify Highway 10 as our top priority. This is not a This is not a county road, but it impacts county residents and county businesses. People were essentially dying and businesses couldn't get employees or their goods and services delivered. And it's been a problem. The combination of both low taxes and investment to infrastructure fulfills what I believe is the responsibility of government as it relates to business, to create an environment where business can prosper, where they can employ our people, and as a result, help to improve our local economy with jobs and productivity. We cannot continue to export our labor force to Minneapolis and places like Eden Prairie. We need to be actively bringing businesses in here to Anoka County, attracting them. And that's precisely what is happening. And as I share this, door knocking, I have yet to run into anyone that opposes these two areas that we've made improvements in Anoka County. Thank you.
Thank you all for that. All right, we're going to move on to question three. And for this one, we'll start with District Three. We have the question, what specific efforts would you make towards improving the ability for business development in Anoka County over the next two years? And Commissioner West will start with you.
Thank you, Chris. The economic shutdown has devastated businesses all over our county. I have visited with many, many of the businesses in the district to share the programs available to them as they work their way out of this terrible hardship. After the CARES Act funds were received by the county, we set up an Anoka County Business Relief Grant Program to support local businesses impacted by COVID-19. Grants will be awarded in the amounts of $10,000, a maximum of $10,000. And eligibility requirements can be found on our website, Anoka County Regional Economic Development, or the website is anokacountysuccess.org. I will continue to connect my business contacts with our economic development specialist, Jekal Hayder. This, she has been, she has the ability to connect customers with a multitude of two tools on her website as they hunt for location, grants, tax incentives, and many other innovative ideas for the motivated employer employee. The Minnesota Career Force in Anoka County works with employers, job seekers, and even skill development of incumbent employees. They help in every way to direct citizens to the need, to the needs, to further their needs to, for finding work or developing their business or starting a business. The Technology Quarter offers an opportunity of businesses, for businesses seeking to locate in the North Metro. It is a goldmine of resources that are available for businesses looking to expand or find amazing opportunities. As our labor force becomes more diverse, the labor participation rates in the non-white labor force is 72% in Anoka County. As this virus makes its way out of town, I expect our opportunities to be endless.
And Niall. Same question.
Thank you, Chris. So I'm going to define success based on a three-legged stool approach. And the first one is to figure out why there's been so little interest in Blaine and Spring Lake Park and Anoka County, as evidenced by few major lawyers locating in the last decade. That's going to cause us to do an immersion via conversation with mayors, city managers, economic development directors, local businesses, county economic development director, North Metro Mayor, Chambers, numerous current businesses, academics, Twin City Gateway, and anyone else you're willing to converse with us. And then we need to investigate and research business openings in adjacent counties and to seek to understand why those businesses chose to locate there as compared to Anoka County. And from there, you'd develop and do some research and develop a strategic marketing plan to address the problem. So that's the first leg. The second one is we need to build stronger coalitions and devise new strategies to obtain more transportation. And we'll be talking about transportation later, but that's one of the major keys. And lastly, we have to form extremely strong city, county, state official coalitions to remove barriers, regulation, or otherwise, and provide assistance where needed and the cost benefit is achieved. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to District One and Commissioner Luck, you'll start this one.
Well, thank you. I think, I think that there are three efforts that are critical to business development. First is taxes. Anoka County has come in of the 0% levy this year. The government grows approximately a 6% inflation rate for utilities, gas, et cetera. By coming in at 0% flat levy, we absorbed that increase, which essentially is a cut. My opponent opposes that. Take, for example, the school district. They just announced they're increasing by a 5.4% levy increase. The city of Ramsey announced a 5% levy increase. On top of that, a newly implemented franchise fee. Residential properties in Ramsey should anticipate a 20% tax, 20 to 30% tax increase or more. And businesses will definitely see more. This should not be seen as just as encouraging business. It actually discourages business. Anoka County is not the lowest taxed metro county by mistake. It is by design. More businesses are calling Anoka County home, bringing their jobs, and hiring our people. Second is broadband. We made an initial investment in broadband with Zayo, providing a backbone fiber optic internet access for governmental agencies to start. Now we're moving into phase two, closing the gap to provide last mile service. I've been working with the city of Nalthen to fund the last mile service to a sector of their city that is underserved with internet service. This has been increasingly important with distance learning and telework. Third, we formed a regional economic development coalition with cities in Anoka County for the purpose of identifying and promoting available areas for development. Site selectors are able to easily navigate and find competitive areas to make investments for target industries such as medical devices, plastics, and precision instruments. The Anoka County Success.org website highlights our skilled and educated labor force. And, and that, in my opinion, is, is what it takes to improve business development within Anoka County. Thank you.
And Mayor Letourneau, same question.
Excellent. Thank you again, Chris. You know, my efforts around this are going to be on a couple of fronts, very similar to what some of the things that I heard already echoed. But there's a concern I have around how much development has not occurred in Anoka County in the last number of years. It almost feels like we're a flyover county. And for whatever reason, it seems that there's a, there's a consistent pattern. And recently, there's been an addition to the staff with Jekal Hayder. And she's brought in an opportunity for us to open up some conversations. And I'm thinking that's a great place to begin. And from where I am, I do have concern about how our county has lack, has a lack of vision. And the vision needs to look more toward the future, more beyond just this particular business cycle or the next two-year business cycle. We need to go beyond that and plan a 20 to 25-year expectation for the county. And then we need to work together to build relationships that can allow for us to meet that vision. And so I think that the, the right strategy is to take the economic development arm of the county and continue to invest in that with the eye being on the different businesses and the opportunities that are here. And it is also in creating relationships. It's making sure that everyone is brought to the table so that we can all have the discussions about what is important in the county and how we need to remove those barriers and how we can continue to work together in a way that allows for this county to grow at a rate that is going to be much beyond what it is right now and more in line with what's happening in some of our neighboring counties. And again, 57% of the folks that work in our county leave the county every day. And this is not acceptable. This needs to be addressed. And it's not going to be addressed by offering a 0% levy. We need to be able to take a look at an opportunity to invest. Now, I like the idea that we have a 0% levy this year because it does give everybody a little break, but it is short sighted. And I'm leaning into the fact that we need to be more visionary and create a picture of what this county looks like in the next number of years. And that's what I'll bring with me, working with the economic development angle. Thanks.
And on to District Two. Thank you. Commissioner Brosnan, you're first on this question.
Thank you, Chris. I'm committed to holding the line on property taxes without an increase for 2021. And I would even support lowering them if we're able to. Because of our efficiencies, we are able to do this without decreasing services. I plan to continue to promote limited but safe government involvement in business regulations. With everything that is going on, I believe we need to be very sensitive to the needs of our business community and do whatever we can to walk alongside them during this challenging times. If needed, I'm willing to look at another round of waiving penalties and interest on late property taxes. I'm extremely committed to the continuing the efforts of the great partnership known as the Anoka County Regional Economic Development Partnership. The acronym is ACRED. This is a collaborative effort between Metro North Chamber, Canexus Energy, and Anoka County that was started in 2017. And it has resulted in the county hiring an economic development specialist. This person is in place to assist all of our cities in our one township in the county in their economic development process. ACRED is here to shine the spotlight on all the wonderful assets that Anoka County has to offer. I sit on this executive committee and see firsthand the successes of ACRED. I would expand the county's excellent work at our Career Force Center, which happens to be the busiest center in the state and where we have initiated many career pathway training programs. I would continue to build upon the partnerships and relationships that have been formed with greater MSP and open to business.
Great, thank you. And Noel, lastly on this question.
Thank you. I'll continue to use the partnerships I've created to connect businesses with city, county, and state resources. I've been part of the manufacturing consortium, and we'll use those connections to work for business opportunities in our county. I will use creative ideas to think out of the box on how we can get funding for chambers since they are not eligible for the COVID grants. There's one sitting commissioner willing to work on this with me, and I'll support these efforts. Supporting business development also includes supporting safe and reliable transportation, public safety, and housing options for potential employees. Business development is multifaceted, and I understand all that goes into building a healthy and supportive environment for businesses to thrive. Thank you.
All right. So before we get to our next question, I would remind the audience, we do have one person who has typed in a question, which we will get to later. But if, if you do have questions and are interested, please start thinking about those now and type them into the chat bar, and we'll get to as many as we can. Back to the normal round. And we'll, I'll ask, again, I'll ask the question, and then we'll, we'll run through this district by district, starting with Mayor Letourneau. What are your budget priorities? And what is your overall philosophy on the level of taxation in the county relative to the business community?
All right, Chris, thank you. In regards to my budget priorities, I, I think that we need to be able to evaluate what is happening systemically throughout the system, the county system, to be able to understand where the priorities are. And I think we need to do this again through what I would call a vision process, something that is forward-thinking, so that we can have a better way to prioritize how to make decisions about building a budget that's appropriate to the growth of the community. And it feels like at times that sometimes this budget is very narrow in its focus. It's, it's major focus sometimes is keeping the lights on. And I'm a little concerned about that, and I want to have an opportunity to address that and take a look at it more systemically. And as that relates to the business community, the business community needs investment. They need to have infrastructure in place. They need to have an environment that allows for them to be able to expand and grow. And there needs to be a plan in place to be able to accommodate that growth. And I think that, that this is an aspect of what is missing inside the budgeting process of this county. It doesn't feel like it's forward-thinking enough. And that's an area that I think we need to focus on. And that's an area that I think that I've got a pretty good experience with. And I'm looking forward to having an opportunity to take a look at that very closely. Thanks.
Thank you. And Commissioner Luck, same question.
Well, thank you. I've touched on this a little bit earlier. My budget priorities can be summed up with needs versus wants. Needs are obviously necessary, but wants are not. We need to continue to pay down debt to, to what I refer to as the Dakota Plan. Dakota County has zero debt. I successfully drove a cash in lieu of bonding strategy at this county, which was essentially stopping borrowing today or eight years ago, and instead turning a focus on repaying debt. I inherited $190 million, and today we have 60 million yet to pay off. So we've made incredible advances in reducing our debt. No county can, can claim this level of debt reduction. As to taxation, businesses are increasingly seeing profits drop and costs continue to rise. Many are not able to purchase the necessary technology to maintain competitive in a world marketplace where they are at a disadvantage due to labor rates. In that climate, you have government continue to ratchet up taxes as the city Ramsey has done. And the net effect is you discourage business investment and you slow business growth. We actually gave businesses relief through the CARES dollars. And now that relief is taken away by overspending cities. That's completely misguided and wrong thinking. I'm beyond proud that Anoka County met our needs, prepared for the worst. We actually prepared many years ago and are more financially stable now than most counties out there coming in with a flood. But this is a true example of responsible governance. Thank you.
And on to District Two. Noel, you'll start with this question.
I'm committed to improving our roads, which is a key point for businesses and their customers for connecting people, goods, and services. It's also key for their employees as well. I believe every business, industry, and resident should not pay more than their fair share of taxes. If we're not being good stewards of these dollars by having an open and transparent board, then we are being wasteful of that money. Businesses are being taxed twice. They pay county property tax, but they also pay the statewide business property tax. We need to help the chamber in addressing this and find a fair way to keep our businesses open and competitive in Anoka County. Your work is hard for your tax dollars. You should keep as many of those dollars in your pocket as possible. I will work hard to ensure that needed investments that improve your life are done responsibly. And I will include your voice in the decision-making process. Thank you.
And Commissioner Brosnan, same question.
Taxes are something I take extremely seriously. There, there's a reason that it's called the tax burden. Out of everything we do as a county board, setting our tax levy is really the most important of all and has the biggest impact on our business community. One of our priorities has been making great strides in reducing the county's outstanding debt while streamlining many processes in order to serve as efficiently as possible. But there is still more work to do. When I was first elected, the outstanding debt was 152 million. As, as Commissioner Luck said, it is now down to $60 million. This has led Anoka County, being the lowest taxed county in the metro area, while being the second fastest growing county in the state of Minnesota. Our philosophy has been to balance the needs versus wants while paying cash in lieu of bonding. Another budget priority for me, especially as Chair of the Public Safety Committee, is that I believe we need to continue to invest in and support our sheriff's office and other law enforcement communities around the county. We must invest in our officers, not defund them. We have all seen the ramifications of what can happen to a business community when there is a lack of law enforcement. We must have a law-abiding community in order to have a successful community.
Thank you. And on to District Three, and for this one, we'll start with you now.
Thank you, Chris. Well, my priorities start with public safety, then moving on to transportation funding. Then you'd have the essential services such as health and human services, elections, assessors, and then your less essential, non-essentials. I, I look at taxes as a value equation, especially when it comes to businesses. And that business is trying to make a determination, is that tax investment greater than the value I receive? And as I talk with my business partners and my business supporters, and you have those conversations, you certainly get gripes and grumbling. But the real barometer is whether or not they're leaving, and nobody's leaving. So that tells me that the current level, you know, the, the equation has been balanced. You know, that's what you have to do, is you have to look at the actions. So maintaining a similar taxation level will be a priority. However, I think we need to be cognizant of the secondary taxing authorities, especially where we, as Anoka County Commissioners, have input. And an example of that is the watershed. And an example of that is the watershed districts. And specifically in the last couple of years, Rice Creek, which covers half of one of the cities I'm in, Blaine, has increased their levy more than fifteen percent. And simultaneously, they use significant reserves, almost fifteen percent of the reserves, a million dollars, to buy that down. You know, why is that important? Well, in Anoka County, we appoint two of those five board members. And paying attention to that type of thing is also just as important in our greater diligence. You know, if we're going to make sure we have the proper level of taxation. Thank you.
And Commissioner West. And you're muted.
You're going to find out that Matt, Julie, and I did not compare notes because we have a lot of the same things. So I will try to buzz over some. But I first want to point out that my philosophy about taxation comes from my rearing. I come from a family where every single one of us, except one, owned a business that we created ourselves. Some of us created more than one business. My father taught me early about profits and loss. The purpose of working hard to build a business is to make a living with the hope of producing profit. Little by little, our government has created onerous taxation that eats away at that profit. I think the taxpayers of Anoka County deserve to keep as much of their hard-earned dollars as they can. With that, as an elected official, I think that we have to spend our residents' dollars as if they were our own. We worked for them. Well, ten years ago, you know, we worked to cut debt and we cut a hundred and twenty-two million dollars or sixty-four percent of that debt. This saves the taxpayers millions of dollars. During those ten years, we also built an asset reserve fund, which we were able to use to pay for big expenses that past county boards have borrowed to use. In September, we passed a flat preliminary levy of zero percent. That is the maximum, and I'm hoping that we can cut it further as others have mentioned. In two thousand twelve, our levy was six point six million dollars less than two thousand eleven. In two thousand thirteen, it was one point five million dollars less than two thousand twelve. And in two thousand fourteen, it was flat. If you consider that nine million dollar total was cut and not assessed during the next three years, we are thankful that we could pull that off since people were coming out of the Great Recession. I'm hopeful for the future. The team we have on the county board is dedicated to keeping our taxes low as possible so that our citizens will keep more of their own money.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, on to a specific transportation question, as you all know. And it's come up throughout several of the other questions. Our transportation needs are significant for commerce and business and for our residents. So, and we'll start with Commissioner Brossed on this. Please state your specific transportation priorities as well as how you plan to address the county's overall transportation needs.
Great, thanks, Chris. As a county board, we have committed to seeing through the final phases of the work being done on Highway Ten. Now that Highway Ten plans are nearing completion, we are actively pursuing efforts to get the state to finally address the mess that is Highway Sixty-Five. We want to take what we have learned from our efforts on Highway Ten and bring them over to lobbying and investing in Highway Sixty-Five, which has been overlooked and neglected for far too long. I am committed to partnering with the cities and the state to bring the much-needed improvements. I am the current co-chair of the North Trunk Highway Sixty-Five Corridor Coalition. And I sit on MnDOT's Advisory Committee for the current Highway Sixty-Five study. There is current legislation for design and right-of-way purchases for the Hundred and Ninth Avenue intersection. Another priority of mine is the intersection of Highway Sixty-Five and Viking Boulevard. To be clear, this was a project designed and paid for one hundred percent by MnDOT. Both the county and the city of East Bethel expressed their concerns about the design prior to its construction. Unfortunately, the intersection has not performed as MnDOT had hoped. The county is in constant communications with our MnDOT reps as they look for safe ways to improve the situation. We will not rest until this happens.
Thank you. Noel, on to you.
Thank you. The county has their twenty-year plan already submitted. It has nothing in it for improving roads. They're counting on zero deaths and hope to maintain the status quo. That will not cut it for a transportation plan in Minnesota. We need more than hope. We need to develop partnerships with our cities, counties, and the state to improve our road. We also need to look at reasons why we don't have alternative transportation options as we move along our corridors. As your county commissioner, I respect every tax dollar and make sure that I am asking the tough questions of those who help craft all spending initiatives. For example, we're spending money on yet another road study instead of engaging in actual planning for long-term positive upgrades and solutions. I've been door-knocking every day since July. I've taken the time to listen to those who live and work in our community, and they recognize the status quo isn't working. They told me their lives are not better today than they were four, eight, or even twelve years ago. They're tired of the loss of life on dangerous roads, time lost in traffic, and money lost in poor planning. Thank you.
Commissioner West, you'll be next on this question. And you'll want to unmute your line.
I've been on these many times. I don't know why I can't get that down. Our populations increased twenty-two thousand, by twenty-two thousand people in the past twenty years. This expansion of Sixty-Five should have happened in two thousand. But fortunately, we're finally in MnDOT's radar and the momentum is beginning. The study is complete. It requires a study in order to know what's under the ground to be able to dig in it. And design concepts are online for the public to look at. I've lobbied my state legislator to get the funding for the study for Hundred and Ninth Avenue. It has to be studied before, and we are hoping it gets in this bonding bill that we hope passes in the next few days. I've been on the MnDOT Task Force to rebuild Highway Sixty-Five for several years and have relationships with the stakeholders. I plan to follow them through the design and assist in getting funding to make the project happen ASAP. It is imperative that local entities are completely engaged to ensure that the highway meets the needs of the community and does not create something that does not work for us. Some features that you can count on seeing are three lanes each way, interchange at Hundred and Ninth, and several over and underpasses along the way. They have to figure out how they're going to do the frontage roads, which I would think are tricky, but engineers can do amazing things. Blaine has gone to the legislature to get funding for Ninety-Ninth Avenue. One plan in their concept I'm not a fan of, and that's where they want to eliminate the interchange that we already have at Old County Road Ten. When I think about how the roads were when I moved to my home in nineteen ninety, the quality has improved tenfold. On Radisson Road, it was broken up asphalt with gravel shoulders, as Niall, I'm sure, remembers very well. One quarter we are going to reconsider in adding a lane to is Lexington. We have a plan for our roads and we will reconsider changing that plan when times happen, when times change. Thank you.
On this question.
Well, thank you. Just one comment on the current plan that they've just completed. There's no funding for that plan. So as Noel said, the county recently adopted the twenty-four transportation plan this past November. And I've reviewed that three hundred and ten-page document. And it is comprehensive and complete. It actually serves as an excellent foundation of roadmap that, if completed, would serve the county's current and future needs extremely well. The plan provides clear direction with three major priorities. Improve capacity on major transportation routes such as Sixty-Five, Hundred, Highway Ten, Thirty-five W. Improve capacity on secondary quarters, which are those county roads. And improve transit service, specifically bus service. However, page sixty-five becomes the singular focal point of the plan where it states "Funding sources trending down, expected to continue. Preservation maintenance will be the goal. No expansion." Additionally, Table Twenty-Six on page eighty-one details that the congestion on the major and secondary roads will double from approximately twenty-five to fifty percent of the time. That is, your current trip is going to take twice as long. Lastly, according to census data, nearly seventy percent of Anoka County residents spend more than twenty minutes commuting with nearly half that, or fifty of that, seventy percent is over thirty minutes. Whether that's congestion or they are leaving the county to work elsewhere, neither are desirable. According to the State Editor, city and county comparison data, Anoka County ranks eighty-six out of eighty-seven in counties on road spending. So clearly, current leadership has not placed transportation funding to the priority level it needs to be. This has to change as transportation is a major obstacle, is why we've not enjoyed as robust a business expansion as desired and more importantly, as possible. With the fourth-largest revenue out of eighty-seven counties, we must examine current spending. And as stated earlier, whether we've been doing, whatever we've been doing to obtain state and federal funding has not worked. And I will use the strategies employed and significant success I have achieved in advocacy for the fire service in obtaining funding and passing major policy for fulfilling our transportation needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Luck, same question on transportation.
Well, thank you. I thank you, Chris. I represent District One, which has Highway Ten and Highway Forty-Seven. Just today, the Minnesota House passed a one point nine billion dollar bonding bill, which included funding for Highway Ten, Third, and Final Phase, Ramsey and Sunfish Lake Boulevards. Additionally, it included a hundred and ten million for two rail-grade safety improvements in the state Morehead and Forty-Seven. Many thanks to Representative Heinrich for his efforts to elevate the importance of grade separation at Forty-Seven BNSF. Similar to the work we did on Hanson Boulevard, this will have a huge safety improvement to the area. Additionally, we have Highway Sixty-Five that was mentioned that is coming in hot and fast. We are committed to finding dollars and fixing the intersections on Sixty-Five. But I needn't remind everyone that that is a state highway. And the state would love us to levy our people for their highways, but in fact, it's their responsibility. I have the privilege of sitting on the Transportation Advisory Board, where we distributed a hundred and fifty million dollars annually to projects such as these. And I've been instrumental in crafting the scoring to position us well in receiving those funds. From a county standpoint, our county roads are annually rated and scored based on wear and tear. We continue to have roads that exceed the national average due to the ongoing maintenance and replacement plans that are in place. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank my fellow commissioners. We have an outstanding team. As a result of our work, I believe personally, we are the envy of counties. And as far as plans go, we have planned more than anything else. As I said on the Transportation Committee in Anoka County, we have planned specifically for the roads and the congestion that's coming. And to make a statement contrary to that is quite simply not true.
And Mayor Letourneau, same question.
Excellent. Thank you for the opportunity. And first part of the question says identify which one of your specific transportation priorities they are. And I'll be honest with you. We've got quite a number of challenges and to the point that many have said here in the past is that this county has grown at a dramatic rate. And we are not keeping up with that growth. There's aging infrastructure that's also a part of the challenge around this. And it does go back to this issue about how do we focus on the things that are important for the county? And how do we allocate the resources when we are so restrictive on how we levy and budget dollars? And so there's a real concern around that. Another aspect of this conversation, I think, is that there's a pretty clear consensus that there isn't a general agreement amongst any of the commissioners which one of these projects is the most important or how they are prioritized. Everyone has what they think are their projects, and it feels like they are all working for their own thing. Which, again, leads me to some of the challenge around how this is working, is that we need to work together. We need to make sure that we're not relying on just MnDOT to come forward to solve these problems. We have to create and establish relationships that are not only with all the cities, through the county, through MnDOT, with the state, with the feds. We have to develop those relationships and we have to bring funding sources from many different areas that can all be brought into a play in order to make this kind of work happen and put it into a priority. My priority right now is to try to finish that corridor that's Highway Ten. It has not had any change for sixty-five years. And to some other points, we are outgrowing the capacity on that and needs to be finished. We've had some great improvements in the past couple of years. We are still a long ways off, almost sixty million dollars, away from being able to finish the Highway Ten funding that's needed for Sunfish and Ramsey. But until we can get that funding, we cannot say that we're done. We are going to work and continue to work as a community together to do this. And then from there, we need to identify what the north-south corridors are and how those can all be improved and then put them in a position that we can prioritize that moving forward. So there's a lot of work to do and I'm ready to do it.
Thank you. So that, thank you all for all of the answers that you've just provided to the pre-planned questions. We greatly appreciate it. And I think you provided a lot of wonderful information for the audience. We're now going to go on for the remainder of this to some of the audience questions. Right now, we do only have one in queue. So I will again say, if anyone in the audience does have questions, please type them in the chat bar and we will get those asked. From Roger Johnson to each of you, what does the phrase "Anoka County is open for business" mean to you? If it is open, what evidence can you cite that it is? And if it isn't, why isn't it? And what would you do to open the county for business? And for you to ask that, you keep your answers to sixty seconds. And in the order that we've been going now, this will go to you.
When it comes to business, I don't think it is open for business. A lot of reference to the growth and Blaine's actually been responsible for a third of that growth. It's primarily residential, whether it's single-family or multifamily. And I make that statement based on, we've seen two businesses move in in the last twelve years. Infinite Campus, which really had nothing to do with the county, a lot more to do with just a local boy wanting to come home and there being an exit at Thirty-five W. And then Crown Iron Works, which recently moved in. And as I look at and talk to my business, everybody has the same concern. Highway Sixty-Five, Highway Sixty-Five, Highway Sixty-Five, you need to be born on the other side if you want to get across at rush hour. It simply hasn't placed as high on the priority list as it needs to be. By the county's own plan, nine out of the twelve worst intersections are on Highway Sixty-Five. And we continue to see deaths and accidents on there. So I don't think we're as open for business as much as we need to be. I agree with you, John. We need to have a greater vision. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner West.
When I saw that question, I thought it was open to business. And we have an organization that we can send businesses to that will help them get loans. They help them with financial management, real estate analysis, marketing assistance, strategic planning, business regulations. They have a small business loan program. And that is, if you go onto our website, "Open to Business" is very helpful to businesses who are starting and having, excuse me, trouble. But we are clearly improved. Highway Sixty-Five is in the line. But if you look and see what we did together as a community, Mr. Letourneau, the things that have happened in Highway Ten, and I don't know how long Matt has been on, ten years, eight or ten years, it's amazing what's happened. But Anoka County needs so much help that it's going to take a long time. But Highway Sixty-Five will happen soon.
Mayor Letourneau, you're next.
Excellent, thank you. The phrase "Are we open for business?" We need to be open for business. I think in the city of Ramsey, we are open for business. We have experienced an enormous growth in our industrial and commercial properties in the last number of years. We're poised for growth, and that's exactly what's happening in our community. That's contributing to our tax base and so allowing for us to continue to see a really good future. That future is based on that plan. And so we've got a plan in place. We actually understand where folks are going to go and how we're going to build this out. But we're constrained by what's happening at the county. So I would say the county is not as open for business because it continues to sputter. It continues to not allow for the opportunity for these businesses to grow, even though our county is growing enormously. And that is all based on a lot of the, what I would call, less-than-visionary aspects of how we're approaching this. Like, we need a better vision for the county. I want to bring that vision forward. And I believe that we will be better positioned to be even more open for business in the next number of years. Thanks.
Thank you. And Commissioner Luck, same question.
Thank you. There's many facets to this question, obviously. But let's be clear that cities are responsible for planning and zoning. And planning and zoning is really what drives development in terms of businesses, as well as tax rates and everything else. The Met Council requires cities to come up with a comprehensive plan. They require the county to come up with a comprehensive. They require the county to come up with a comprehensive plan as well, all of which we've done. And they have to approve that plan, which they have done as well. Now, the simple fact that our highways are neglected by the state is not a fault of the county. It's not a fault of the cities. It's a fault of the state. The state needs to step up and own responsibility for this. I recall 10 years ago, when we brought up the conversation, and I believe that Commissioner Harhart is on, former Commissioner Harhart is on here, but he actually brought up the idea with me to start working on Highway 10. And I want to thank him for that. That was, that was a great idea. But the problem was some of our sitting legislators at that point said, "Good luck. It'll never get done." We didn't take that as a, as an answer. We started to bite size, figure out how we can get these things done. And I'm telling you right now, in 2026, Highway 10 will be completed. We have a $60 million or whatever the amount is deficit, but it will be completed by 2026. Or we forfeit the $40 million grant that we just received. And by the way, Mindot said we've never forfeited any grant. So Mindot will have to step up to this. We are definitely committed to being open for business. A lot of the growth that Ramsey is citing right now is as a result of the Armstrong Interchange, which was a county project with nine funding partners. We came together, made that thing happen, and the rest of the projects we will do as well. So I encourage people to keep pushing because change is coming in terms of growth in Anoka County.
On to District Two, and Noel, you'll, same question.
Sure. Well, I'm a glasses-half-full guy, so Anoka County is open for business. Yeah, I, I think Anoka County is open for business. But I see it in spots and pockets. And they've done a great job over in Ramsey and Lionel Lakes and Coon Rapids. You know, parts of their transportations are great. But in the district I'm looking at, District Two, I've got five cities in there. And Blaine and Andover are, are, you know, succeeding. But as you get further up, there's less and less opportunities. So I think the chambers are engaged, businesses are there. It's just getting people in and out of these businesses and making it easy. That's what's lacking, and we need vision to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Brasshead.
Thank you. As far as being open for business, Anoka County is open for business. We welcome businesses with open arms. Our actions actually speak louder than our words. We have the low, we're the lowest taxed county in the metro area and the second fastest growing. Those two things just don't happen willy-nilly. So for some candidates to say that there is no plan, that we're not approachable, that there's no transparency, it is nothing. They have nothing to talk about except making up some of these claims. The lower taxes, good infrastructure, and an approachable and involved county board is what makes Anoka County a great place to do business. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And that brings us to the end of our questions. Why don't we do a just a 30-second, very quick completion of this? And then, and thank you all. Thank you all for joining us. We will, we will get this out to the larger business community. We did have a wonderful viewership. But again, thank you. So starting with Commissioner Look, will you give us 30 seconds, a closing statement, please?
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Thank you for taking your time to do this. And thank you also to Metro North again for putting this on. Again, I'd like to ask for your vote on November 3rd. Together, we have made Anoka County better. And with your support, I will continue to represent you in an accountable and responsible manner. Please visit my website at www.votemattlook.com and spread the word on the good work we're doing here in Anoka County. Thank you for your time.
Mayor Letourneau.
Great. I'd like to do this in the style that I conduct my online presence. And it's the way that I reach out to my community and the way that they're looking for messaging. And so I'll say, "Everyone, I'm John Letourneau, and I'm so excited to be running for your next Anoka County Commissioner in District One. I want to thank the Metro North Chamber of Commerce for putting this together and for Chris for facilitating for us. It is my pleasure to have been serving as your mayor and a council member for the last 12 or 10 years, almost 10 years now. And I am so excited about this new opportunity for me to be able to improve transparency and to get some amazing work done at the county in a way that hasn't been done in a long time. It's time for us to roll up our sleeves. I'm John Letourneau. I'm very happy to take your vote for next, for the next, the next Anoka County Commissioner in District One. Thank you.
Thank you. On to District Two, Commissioner Brasshead.
The Anoka County's mission statement is to serve citizens in a respectful, innovative, and fiscally responsible manner. Every decision I make is based on fulfilling this mission statement. And experience matters. As the only candidate in my race with experience in setting policy at both a city and a county level, I understand what businesses are looking for. So if you're a fan of creative solutions and common sense and someone that's committing their time full-time to this position, then it's clear that I'm the right person for, for the job. I again humbly ask for your support.
Thank you. And Noel.
Hi. Well, I want to thank, you know, everyone for this opportunity. It's been a blast. I enjoyed it. I encourage everyone to vote on November 3rd and check out my website, votefornoel.com. Or if they have questions, send me an email at votefornoel@gmail.com. But this has been fantastic. I've learned a lot by going out and visiting the many cities. And, and it's time for a change. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Noel. And District Three, Commissioner West, closing statement.
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to be here. And I look forward to continuing to serve the people in District Three. And again, like Commissioner Brasshead said, is the experience, particularly in the situation that we've faced with COVID. We have already started to change the, to the new normal because of COVID. And I, I have great relationships. I'm already, they're already in place. And I'm ready to hit the ground running on January 5th when we start. I respectfully ask for your support and your vote during this time.
Thank you. And Nile.
Let me also extend those same thanks and gratitude. And I'll take a page from your John's book and what I'm doing out at the door. The only campaign promise I'm making at the door is to work hard. And I've used that my whole life, successful in many businesses, substantive success down at the Minnesota Legislature and getting major policy in, in business. I've just learned that working hard over time equals greater success. And if you're looking for a candidate that will actually deliver on that promise of getting 65 done, I'd ask you for your support. And thank you.
Well, thank you all. And this brings us to the end of our forum. I want to thank the candidates. Thank you all. You deserve a round of applause. And the Metro North Chamber of Commerce, Lori, thank you for everything you do. You've been an amazing leader in driving this organization and this business community forward. With that, please remember to vote and have an awesome day. Thank you all.
You too, Chris. Bye-bye.
Thank you.